I texted with Margaret a little bit.
Yeah.
She seemed okay.
She's here.
She's here too.
So I'd like to call regular council meeting of the Beach Haven Borough Council to remember. It is Monday, August 9th, and it is 6:01 PM. Would you please stand for the pleasure of allegiance and we'll ask Mrs. Rutherford to lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice for all.
First, so into the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate and electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in the Beach Haven Municipal Building on the Borough website and mailing the same to the Beach Haven Times, the Esbury Park Press, and the rest of Atlantic City. Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Here.
Dr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Here.
Mayor Lambert?
Here.
Tonight, we're going to start out with a special presentation. Beach Haven was honored about a month ago. We were named the number one favorite beach in Ocean County by the Sea Grand Consortium of New Jersey. And unfortunately, there's been a lot going on, so we did not get a chance to recognize the departments that we wished to at the time, so we would like to do that tonight. So I'm going to ask the Public Works Department to please come up here and our Beach Patrol and Bannish Checkers come up on the side. All right. It is with great pride and pleasure that I can show you. That I can show you this sign that was awarded to us. And we wanted to make sure everybody had their own, so we did get one for each department. Now, there were 13,000 voters apparently that weighed in on this. And for Beach Haven to come out number one, point plus it was number two in Ocean County, we were very, very honored. And we thought there were two particular departments, although it is a team effort and are more involved. And our Public Works team tonight, the head of Public Works, Chris Carson, is here. And our recycling coordinator, Jim Spera, is here to accept the award. I think I always told them, the Public Works Department, the unsung heroes of this town. They do so much, and a lot of times they only hear about it when something isn't done properly, but there's so much that's done right. Their team is up at zero dark 30 with that beach rate. They're taking care of the trash. They are doing so many things to keep those beaches in great condition. And our beaches are in great, excuse me, condition. However, what most people don't realize is that this winter, we took a terrible hit. I mean, it was bad. And they worked tirelessly for months to get our beaches up and running. So it is a great pleasure and honor that I know you gentlemen and everybody else in your department have earned, and we're very proud of you, and we thank you very much. My medical one. And this is for the other half of the team that made us the number one favorite beach in Ocean County. And those are our patrols and our checkers. Now, the patrol, I think everybody always kind of has this Baywatch thing in mind, and nothing could be farther from the truth. They work very, very hard. They are up practicing in the morning. They are on the stand all day. And if you think sitting in the stand looking out the water all day is easy, it's not. I've never done it except for like an hour and it was tough. But it's when they are on that they are really on, and it's a matter of life and death. And I can't emphasize enough how proud we are. And we really do recognize it, even though like, you know, oh, they're getting a wide around, isn't that cool? No, we know that you're doing a very important interval job, and we truly thank you from the bottom of our hearts and from all of you from the community and from the council. So we have our chief, Megan Morrow, and we have our first lieutenant, Artur Bealn. And I would like to present this to you, sort of, but I'm going to take it back for a second. And the other half of the team are the people that bring the money in. They're really important. And our head checker and charge of the whole program down there, Kelsey Kohler, and Sue Senior, our assistant. And like I said, this entire team is what makes Beach Haven the number one beach along with our Public Works Department. We are very, very proud and grateful to all of you. Thank you. Cash receipts in the current fund account for the period of July 1st to July 31st, 2021 were $478,727.32. Cash dispersments in the current fund account for the month of July, 2021, total of $5,000,68,549.85. Cash bounds in the current fund account for this period total $9,679,362.39. Cash receipts in the water utility account for the period of July 1st to July 31st were $14,991.47. Cash dispersments in the water utility account for the month of July total $355,120.21. And the cash bounds in the water utility account as of July 31st was $4,080,108.3. Submitted by our treasurer, Sherri Bowler, who is in the house tonight. Sherri? I have minutes for approval to July 12th, regular meeting. Does everybody have a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
So a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Ordinance 2021, 24C, and ordinance supplementing Chapter 151, property maintenance by the addition of Article 6 invasive plants of the Borough Code of the Borough Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, to regulate invasive species such as poison ivy and bamboo within the Borough Beach Haven. Final reading. Since this is a final reading, it is open to the public. Please limit your comment to three minutes. We'll start with the room first. And yes, just make yourself known and please come on up. Yes.
Hi. My, um, is this on?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, is it on? Okay. My name is Laura Simon. My family has been homeowners here for 50 years. 123 Chatsworth Avenue in Beach Haven. I'm also a wildlife biologist. I have two points of concern for this. I applaud the borough for trying to control invasive harmful plants. However, the first concern I have is the definition of invasive plants, which is that all vines and vegetation which grow out of place and are competitive, persistent, and pernicious. This definition is overly broad and subject to misinterpretation. Many plants are, you know, out of place can be subject to anybody's bias or assumption. Most plants are competitive, persistent, a lot of plants are. Pernicious is decent, but the problem is a plant like milkweed, which is ecologically important for the monarch butterfly, could fall under this definition of invasive plant, which would be a real problem ecologically. I would like to see this definition changed. I've written up testimony for you, but I don't have a printer at home and I couldn't find a place to print it, so I'll send it to you, Sherri. But the definition I have is based on the President's Executive Order of 1311-2 of February 99 and the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service. And I threw in a few things of my own. But basically, I request that you change this definition to a plant that is both non-native and able to establish on many sites, comma, grow and spread quickly, comma, to the point of disrupting and causing harm to plant communities, ecosystems, or human health. I think you need to be really specific. And just as a side note, I was subject to an overeager borough staffer years ago who took one of your ordinances to, and we were cited for blight and a public menace for allowing native herbs and plants to grow in our yard. So I am, I have directly experienced what can happen when somebody misinterprets, misinterprets the, the point and the goal of a certain ordinance that may be overly broad. So I think you need to hone it down, make it more specific. And this is what I suggest. The other issue I have with this ordinance is the penalty, which requires that the, any problem that is flagged be remediated within 30 days. The problem is for people like us who live out of state, we have summer homes. Say a problem is flagged in late August, September, you know, 10 hours away. For me to have to come back here, do a round trip of 10 hours or more, depending on traffic, is really, I think, unwarranted. Particularly, the spread of invasives is not a matter that requires urgent remediation. So I would recommend that you change that 30-day remediation requirement with a rather severe penalty to the next growing season. Because homeowners like me, if there's a problem, I'm happy to come down in the late spring and summer, the growing season when you see the plant. Something like poison ivy, late in the season or very early in the spring, you're not even going to see the growth of the plant. So, you know, we, you should tie it to the proper time to get rid of the problematic plant. So those are the two suggestions I have. I'll follow up with you, Sherri, with wording.
Yeah, I just want to go now through the various sections included in our property maintenance code that states that we encourage, you know, natural butterfly habitat.
I wrote the language, yeah. We, I was involved with that, yes.
Yeah, I think that was your suggestion.
Yeah.
To adopt that.
Right.
That protects those areas that may not be what most people think as a root bed.
Right.
But is a habitat for butterflies.
Yes.
Hopefully, that's a good balance to what we're trying to do here.
Right. I just think, yes, I fully agree. I just think you need to tighten up your definition so it can't be misconstrued. That language, I think, is good. And I think most people here recognize the value of milkweed. However, I've seen some people ripping it out and saying it grows so, you know, aggressive, which it is, which is a good thing for the monarch butterfly, that it is rather aggressive. But we just, I just think you got to be careful. Who knows who's going to fill what shoes in the future? And let's, you know, have a tight definition that's crystal clear. So the, these are the two things I just want to flag to your attention. I'll send you the language. And thank you. I feel this council has been so receptive in the past when I've come before you, and I just appreciate that greatly. So thank you.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Kevin Tatlow, and I own property affected by the ordinance in terms of, we have a property with, the prior owner.
Sorry, what's yours? Do you have to state your name?
The properties involved are 445 Center Street and 444 Dock Road, which we own. They're adjacent. The, the prior owner planted some clumping bamboo, and there's also some running bamboo in the area that originated at a neighbor. And I think I wanted to emphasize that the, you know, the definition of bamboo is very broad. Some bamboos don't spread. The running bamboos are the, the challenge. The clumping bamboos would take a lot of time to get across the property line. They just slowly spread. But the, the real issue that I wanted to bring up is, as a homeowner looking to comply with this, it's quite terrifying to find out that if there's a complaint, we will have 30 days from the end of next, of this month to find a bamboo specialist to either make sure the trenching on it is deep enough and perfect or find a specialist who can schedule in to mitigate the whole area and properly take it out. So I think, and the penalty of $2,000 per day and the threat of prison may not be appropriate for a landscape offense. Might be more appropriate for something that's, you know, a threat to public welfare. And I think that, that I'll add a little color on bamboo since our botanist explained it. I think the thing about bamboo is the running bamboo that's in the neighborhood, you don't know where it is until sort of May 1st. It's not, you know, you cut it out and it's gone, and then you, you know, then it pops up. So anyway, I appreciate your hearing our concerns. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else in the room who'd like to be heard on this issue? Now, is there anybody on Zoom who'd like to be heard? Would you like to comment on this ordinance you could raise in electronic? Seeing none? Seeing none. We've had a couple of valid concerns to move. Do we want to delay on this? What are the thoughts?
Yeah, that's one of the questions. Yeah, because that would be something to change, so you have to republish it anyway.
So we will table this one for now?
Can you do that by formal motion or if there's no objection from the council? Does, does anyone here object to tabling it?
No.
How's it analogous? Any objections to the tabling this one?
Thank you.
Ordinance 2021, 25C, ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 141, piece in the order of the Borough Code of the Borough Beach Haven to authorize the Beach Haven Police Department for Beach Haven Code Enforcement Officer to issue citations for certain violations. Final reading. Again, final reading, so it's open to the public. Is there anybody in the room who would like to comment on this ordinance? No? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to comment? No? All right, seeing none, we will close it to public comment. Is there a motion to approve 2021-25C?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021, 26C, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 166, no, I'm sorry, 176-12 of the Borough Code of the Borough Beach Haven to provide more specific guidelines and regulations to better equip the code enforcement officer of the boroughs to make informed recommendations to the borough manager of correction and elimination of such conditions. Final reading. Again, it's open to the public. Is there anybody in the room who would like to comment on 26C? No? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to? Seeing none, close to public comment. Is there a motion to approve 2021-26C? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
I have 2021-28 on the agenda just to explain that the capital ordinance was introduced. This was for funding for the waterway replacement on Calum Avenue. I had first reading on July 29th. It was scheduled to be published on August 2nd. It did not make August 2nd edition. Instead, it went into the August 3rd edition. So I did not have enough time to have a final reading today. So we're going to present it at the next meeting, which will be August 30th. That will be for final readings. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Ordinance 2021-30C, and ordinance amending Chapter 84, drug-free zones of Borough Code, Borough Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, to adopt an updated drug-free zones map. First reading. Since it is the first reading, there's no public comment. Have all the council members had a chance to look this over? Basically, there's just a change in the date of the map. Still the same ordinance, just a change in date. Everybody's?
Yeah, I have no issue.
Is there a motion to approve 2021-30C? So moved. Second?
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-31C, and ordinance amending Chapter 171, smoking of the Borough Code of the Borough Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, to include cannabis products within the definition of smoking. First reading. Again, no public comment on this one as a first reading. And have all the council members had a chance to look this one over?
Yes.
That's pretty basic. It's just adding cannabis to our already existing ordinance. Is there a motion to approve 2021-31C? So moved. Second. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-32C, and ordinance amending Chapter 212 zoning of the Borough Code of the Borough Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, to remove the section permitting all uses in the RC District as also permitted in the VT District. Adding and prescribed requirements for apartments above commercial units and a permitted use. Add certain residential units, hotels and motels to the list of prohibited uses within the VT District. And to clarify the prospective application of the residential prohibition. First reading. Again, no public comment on this one. It's probably a lot to digest. I'm sure there are some questions, which we have a few people here that could answer, but not right now, of course, only on the public comment. And is there anything that any of the council want to ask for a second?
Just to clarify that the VT District is a business district and that we're run along a diagram.
Is there a motion to approve 2021-32C?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll say. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-33C, and ordinance amending Chapter 212 zoning of the Borough Code of the Borough Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, to amend the definition of impervious lot coverage, clarify requirements for fencing. First reading. Again, no public comments as first reading. Council, any comments, questions on this one?
I just have, the fences, the fences, where is this coming from?
This was a suggestion from Joanne, Dr. Marie, and Brian Little to allow fences to go along the side of the property from, the property, from the structure to the front property line. This diagram tried to explain to me that, you know, the back, from the house to the back of the property line, we were allowed a certain amount of fence. And then from the edge of the property to the front, it had a different requirement. Right. So they're trying to allow.
The same kind of fence to be up in the back as is in the front?
It will be five foot solid, one foot lattice, instead of five foot, 50% open from the front, from the structure to the front property line. To allow a little more privacy from the structure to the front of the property line. Does that make sense? You used to be allowed to have five foot solid, one foot lattice from the structure to the back of property line.
Right.
But then it had to be a shorter fence to the front. Now it's the same both ways. It's a five foot solid, one foot lattice from the front property line to the back of the property line.
It does, but.
It's fencing off everyone's yards.
Yes, it's fencing off, blocking everyone.
Yep.
Can I make a comment on this? It's frankly little.
Yeah, I can't visualize this.
So my, my understanding of this ordinance was that we're only allowing this fence to be solid up from the rear property line up to the front face of the house, not from the front face to the street. Right now, you can only have a solid fence from the rear of the house in the back. So, and then after that, you would have to have a open fence along the side of your house. So I think people were concerned and wanted to have a solid fence up along the side of their house, and it would stop at the front face of the house. Everything from the front face to the road would still be the 50% open.
Okay.
That's what this ordinance should be. I don't have the actual ordinance in front of you, but that's the intent.
Thanks.
I think that's what it does.
Yeah.
That's four foot and 50% of custom.
Right. We're not fencing solid fence all the way to the road.
Okay.
So, all right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else on this one? All right. Okay. Is there a motion to approve 2021-33C?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
All matters listed under item consent agenda are considered to be routine by the municipal council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. And any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately. All consent agenda items will be reflected in the full in the minutes. Resolution 124 is adopting the Borough Beach Haven Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. 149 is returning dumpster bonds. 150, returning piling bonds. 154, authorizing to advertise for bids for the 2021 goldhead replacement project, 12th Street and Coral Street. 159, refunding an annual lease fee with gold slip number seven. 170, returning remaining escrow. 171 is approving fireworks displays on various dates in the area of Taylor Avenue. 172, releasing performance bond and remaining escrow. 173, returning heart bonds. Everybody have a chance to review the resolutions in the consent agenda?
Yes.
Any questions or concerns?
And we're just clarifying, 171 is the ones that were discussed at the last meeting by Mr. Wakeberry.
Correct.
Not additional ones.
No, he had all his paperwork in, everything looked great, and we've already gotten a thumbs up from our insurance company.
Okay.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the resolutions within the consent agenda? So moved. Second? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Of the bills this evening in the amount of $911,433.93. Everybody have a chance to look over the bills? Any questions or concerns?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Okay, for general discussion, we wanted to have preliminary capital budget discussion. You have Sherri Bowler, CFO, Treasurer, Tax Collector, or Rent Collector. Come on up, Sherri, because you have a seat right here at my microphone. To provide the council with handouts and leave-in and Nancy, your email, some basic information that Sherri would start this, go dive into our wish list.
Um, okay. Okay. So we have the, pretty much the same discussion every year. I don't know how in-depth you want me to get, but, you know, you have before you a list of items, which is basically a compilation from all the department heads, the engineer, of, you know, everybody's wish list that everybody would like to put into motion for a capital project this year. I recommend every year, I, you know, we always kind of say we would like a benchmark of, you know, a million dollars for the year. As we have discussed at length, every year when we have this discussion, every year when we have our budget discussion, you know, our budget is really driven by debt and debt service. So, you know, that is the bones and what drives the budget up. So if we try to stay within a certain range, we keep our pay down consistent. We've gotten proactive in the past few years where we've put a little bit more money to try to accelerate the pay down. It's worked well for us. If you take a look at the, the one. If you take a look at the, the one legal size spreadsheet that I gave you, it basically outlines for the past 10 years or so, all of the ordinance that we've done. It shows the ordinance and its total amounts compared to the amount that's authorized to issue in the form of bond anticipation notes. And then how we have to pay it off. It's a, it's a one-year payment with, has to be paid off in full in 10 years. And that is how we finance. We have short-term financing with our bond anticipation notes. We don't have serial bonds. As our notes get larger in value, it's a discussion we have every year with our bond counsel is if we want to move to permanent financing, but at this time, every year we evaluate it and what we're doing works for us for now. But it's, it's, you know, wise to keep it at a certain amount so that we can stay consistent and we don't have a spike in our debt service. So you can see by this list, you know, what, what we've appropriated over the past 10 years or so. It's somewhat consistent. We had a spike when Sandy came. But we've tried to stay in a good range. We're, we're doing okay in that regard. I had another sheet that I gave you, but. I don't think I didn't hear this. The other sheet that this also gives the trend over the past 10 years of our, what our net debt is, since 2012 and beyond, I've compared over the past 10 years what our debt service appropriation looks like in our budget compared to what the total budget is in the form of a percentage. So you can see, you know, in the past 10 years, we've gone from 4% to 13 and a half percent. So, you know, again, Sandy had a lot to do with that. But better off right now to just keep it at a consistent level, you know? You know, I don't know how much more in-depth.
I have a question. Can you, something I thought of after I left talking with you. What is the interest rate for our debt versus what the interest rate we're getting on our surplus? So like if our debt interest rate is higher than our surplus?
We have, this year was the first year, we actually got a really good interest rate for our note rollover. I think it was like 0.3%. It was very low, so.
And then our interest rate for our surplus?
Is, money in the bank is also very low right now.
Yeah.
So likewise, it's, it's similar.
It's similar.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So this is actually the number. What are you recommending?
I've, I mean, we've, I've been recommending a million dollars over the past few years. Last year we did. Pretty good. The amount to authorize was 585,000, which was great. Our total ordinance was 990, so we stayed right at that level, but it was also partially funded with the DOT grant. So. But, you know, in 2020, we had 6.5 million in notes issued. We paid down 1.2 million. We had to borrow a little bit more money because of ordinances that were starting to come into play. So our notes that we have now is 6,675. So we stayed very consistent and we went up slightly.
Right. Where's the 727 in the new, what is that?
That's from the 2019 ordinance that, so we roll over our notes every year in May. So this past May, we had the 2019 ordinance that I hadn't borrowed that money yet. I didn't borrow it in 2020 because a lot of times I realized that we might not be getting to a project right away. So I may not borrow all of it at once. I'll do it in piecemeal if we can, you know, maybe wait a year. So that when that 2019 ordinance was adopted, I actually didn't borrow that money until May of 2021. Like for instance, the Sandy ordinance that we put into place for our capital projects that had to be rebuilt after Sandy, including the Public Works Garage at the time was a million and a half. We didn't borrow that money until just, you know, last year. So instead of borrowing it at the time and paying interest over the past, you know, seven years, we waited until we knew we were going to start spending the money. So, you know, you have a list in front of you and, you know, I guess if you want to tackle, it's, it's your choice as council what you want to spend and what you're comfortable and what, you know, what we choose to do. And then I take it back to the table and figure out how to finance it. Sometimes we've done really well over the past few years where we've pulled smaller items off. We pulled vehicles off of the equation and we fully funded them. We've built up our capital improvement fund over the past few years. That has worked for us. So that's another, you know, opportunity we have.
Shari, did you email these ones to the other council?
All right. Dan and Nancy both.
Yeah, I don't have these sheets. I have the one that you re-mailed out with totally different numbers on it. I don't have that one.
From Shari today. It was an email from Shari today.
I have the one, current capital fund projects sheet that you sent out. That's all I have. I don't have what you have there by ordinance.
We don't have that either.
Yeah. That was, this is where, I have handouts for you guys, but then Shari said they weren't going to be here, so I emailed to just those two.
I, yeah, I just had the two, the 2016 cap calculations and, and the other one basically is the, it's just a little bit different, you know? I don't have the wish list of what.
The important document now, I think, is the wish list. I think Dan and Nancy.
Is that the current fund capital projects?
Yes.
It's linked on the, on your agenda page as well. If you want to click on the link there, you can follow it that way.
Okay. All right. Well, that's where I'm at. Okay.
See it?
Yeah. That's the one I'm looking at. I followed off the link on the page, but I didn't get an email with anything else, so.
I can resend it.
Yeah, I don't have that either.
We don't. I don't know what happened. But I can resend that. But that's the document they, we've talked, same document. I've just updated it this year, but they've seen it at.
How about we do that? How about we bring Chris up to this table, put the chief here, we crank on Zoom and we'll start going through the list. If you want to go upstairs and send that and then we'll back, we'll come back around to that and get to the end of it.
That's fine.
I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing, that's all.
Eric, can you email that to me also? It's Frank.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Chris, can I have you up at this table for chief this one? Right in. All right. All right. So if you are able to follow the link where you have it in front of you, the first item on the capital budget list for this year is the road reconstruction project. Frank, did you want to talk about that a little bit? We have 375,000 listed on this.
Get myself back. Get myself back on the screen here. So, yeah, which, I, I don't have the sheet in front of me, Shari, so what was, what was the category? Was this the road project?
This is the road project.
The DOT project.
Yeah, for A Street. Or is.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that, that's for A Street and two sections of Delaware. And we're getting a good part of the funding from the DOT under the local aid grants.
So what, and Shari talked about this a little bit with me one-on-one. I know that that is a pretty large amount, so we're really not asking for 375, right?
We're allowed to.
Yes, yes. We received a grant for 373 and we're putting in the budget 75, so we're almost fully funded there.
Right.
So we're really asking for 2,000.
2,000.
Yeah. Okay. The next item on the list is the Ocean County Schedule C Roads. We appropriate money every year to be able to utilize the Schedule C services of the county. They can do road projects for us, road projects for us for less than a contractor could. In the past two years, we budgeted about 160,000 over the past two years and we haven't been able to undertake any of those projects because of COVID. So we did put in 60,000 thinking that we are going to have another set of projects coming up, but chances are that we're going to catch up on three years worth of Schedule C projects, probably slim. Right? That might be some low hanging fruit right there. Did not appropriate any funds under utility ditches. We're going to move that to next year. This is a capital plan that goes into '22, '23 and '24. So you'll see that we didn't move that ditch repair money into 2022. We have 100,000 in remove and replace storm drains. That continues to be a project that we need to, to work on. Last year we appropriated the same. In 2022, we anticipate the same. And then you see in '23 goes down 50,000. And Frank, our thought there was that we're going to see our expenses here go down because we're going, we're anticipating the project and replacing 7,000 linear feet of storm drain as part of the project.
Yeah, I believe it's a little over 4,000. I don't remember seven, but.
Okay.
But a good part of it is, is storm drains that we have to take care of and it's part of that pump project. So it does go down as you go further into, what was it, '22?
Yeah, we're anticipating another 100,000 in '22 and then in '23 cut in half, '24 cut in half.
Right, correct.
Okay. Under replace bulkheads, we are requesting another 150,000 for Coral Street and 12th Street. That was the amount that we requested last year and the amount that we led to request going forward into 2022. We don't have an appropriation for '23. And then our plan for 2024 is to tackle the large bulkhead at the end of Pearl. We can see going forward, a larger amount in 2024. The TBW heavy equipment, we're requesting 225,000 for a loader. This was a loader that Chris requested last year and it was removed from the budget. And then going forward next year, requesting a dump and the year after that, a bulldozer for each maintenance. We're not requesting any additional funds for beach walkway improvements at this time. We're not requesting replace trash truck. That is, would be a next year project. We do put 50,000 almost every year for refurbishment of trash trucks. Most of our trash trucks are on a 20-year lifecycle, so they require a lot of maintenance and metal replacement. We're not requesting a four-wheel drive pickup for Public Works. We're not requesting a two-wheel drive pickup, a skid steer, surf grade. The fire signery we included last year, so these are all zeros. And the old police station renovation is also at zero. The next item for this request is 65,000 for police vehicles. 19,000 for, to replace one of the electronic signboards. Go up to the other side. Not requesting any additional funds this, this year for police equipment. Park improvements, we have a small amount, 75,000. The plan was to replace some of the dock road bayfront walkway there. Nothing for mower replacement, nothing for playground equipment, trash containers. Those are all zeros for this year. Requesting another 20,000 for tie valves. There is a request for an additional 600,000 for the interior retrofit of the Public Works Garage. Earlier this year, I believe it was earlier this year, we amended the original ordinance for construction of the Public Works Garage and to include another additional amount to get that structure up. And we included a mezzanine. The mezzanine is like an open metal structure along the roof line for storage of equipment, things like that. The interior retrofit would actually be the construction of offices, bathrooms, locker rooms.
Carpenter shop.
Okay. So we're requesting another 600,000 to complete that project and then it would be. We do have a property acquisition line on this budget. We're not requesting anything there. 15,000 for beach equipment. It's been discussed over a period of years, possibly purchase a six-person gator and maybe employ a part-time employee that would help get our patrons over the beach entrances. That was the idea at the time, that request. At some point, we'll have to tackle a fixed asset inventory. Got something on for next year. We haven't done it in quite, quite a few years. It's quite a task to inventory label every item that we own, every chair, if we have a piece of equipment. That will be coming up the pipeline. We did put the youth skate park on the list, but we moved it to next year's budget. Computer equipment is at zero. We will be looking to do a police accreditation at some point, possibly next year. We anticipate in the future, looking at another revaluation at some point. We're watching the numbers with the tax assessor and anticipating that that might happen again. So we have the line on here, but we're not putting it in this budget. We put, nothing in for fuel tank maintenance, but we anticipate that next year. And the final item on the wish list for this year is the upgrade to the traffic signals. You'll notice that Long Beach Township has upgraded all their signals to. They're not hung by guide wires anymore. They're on the, on an arm. It's an upgraded light with a countdown clock giving pedestrian buttons and ADA type of electronics. So we reached out to Ocean County about upgrading our lights. One of ours in town is already under county control and has already been upgraded. So we'd be looking at upgrading the five remaining traffic signals. We'd be doing a 50/50 split with the county and our cost for that would be 625,000 approximately. So that would bring the wish list for this year at 2.2 million 379,000. Love it. Dan and Nancy, were you able to get some documents?
Yeah.
Frank, do you have something in front of you?
Uh, no, not yet.
No, me neither.
Unless it's just, wait, maybe, yes, I do.
Did it come through? I, I, look, I've been, hold on.
You guys have it in front of you. If you want to, you can start from top again and you can ask questions on your way down.
Yeah, I have it now.
I had a question about the road reconstruction.
Yeah.
About that we were going to get a grant for that. So is that the real number that we're going to need, 375? Or can we reduce that off the bottom line?
The grant money that we have been pledged was 373? 372? I mean, you don't represent that we made that an actual, you, Shari?
No, I, I mean, that's, that's the estimate for the project and that the grant really covers.
Most of it.
So should it stay in the budget or should it? It has to. You need that line item of information to spend it, but when the ordinance is drafted, it's going to have, there's different columns of the financing of it. So that's the, we listed under the next column of 375. Okay. Not too far. Okay. Okay.
The other question I had was the big one, the traffic signals? Do we have to do them all in one, or can we spread those out, spread them out, you know, across three or four years?
Well, they did offer a multi-year agreement. If we need to do it, we can enter a multi-year agreement with them and pay it over time. That would be, if that's something that you're interested in doing, Shari and I can try to work out the funding. Is that a project if you wanted to see tax?
What's the.
Yeah. Because some of the lights, I know the chief has requested that those lights be upgraded too. Because some of the lights, I know the chief has requested that those lights be upgraded too.
It's mainly pedestrian safety because it has the walk, don't walk, the countdown. And it also, you don't get as much wear on the lights. We have a lot of problems with those lights. You know, they're older, they're just on, on wires. I don't know, they've replaced, they replace them every once in a while, but them swinging back and forth on those wires, they go through a beating.
I'm okay with replacing them.
Yeah, Taylor and Bay is the only one, it's the legal light.
And they did that on their own, right?
Yeah.
That was here when I, before I started, so I don't know.
It's been like that. There's no push button.
No, there isn't.
But looking forward, I mean, it does go down. I mean, I understand that this is something you want, excuse me, but as the budget goes down in future years, you know, maybe that's something we would want to worship. So we're not taking such a huge hit inside the public.
I had something to say. So I appreciate what you're saying about like having pedestrian, you know, so they know when to walk or not walk. But what I find when I'm going down the boulevard, people are speeding up to beat the count clock. And so having those here in town, I could just potentially see someone trying to cross, and the person's, I mean, look. You know, we could go round and round with all kinds of suggestions as to why it's good, why it's bad. But that would be my concern about, you know, necessarily upgrading them that way, so I don't know.
On the pedestrian side of that, though, you have pedestrians who are impatient, waiting for a red light to turn green so they can cross.
Yeah.
And they get tired of waiting, and then they cross.
Right.
Only for the change, the light to change halfway through. So
Right.
if they knew there was only five more seconds before it changed, they might wait. And it's not something that we need to have done all at one time either. It was just something that I brought up that
Yeah.
might help with pedestrian safety. And we do have a lot of complaints about people, you know, crossing against the lights. And maybe if there was more signage, you know, there was a light there telling people not to walk, maybe it would help. We have a lot of people who visit here from out of state. I'm hopeful.
Well, you do it in New York City when you see it, you stop. But, okay, just a thought.
The only thing that worries me about the old lights is the wire, but that's like, we have a loose end where the top of the lights is just going around it.
Where when they start to sag a little and a truck hits them.
But I've seen the ones on those poles actually hanging and not secure either, so.
Yeah, I just don't think this year, with where we are right now, that this is the part that's sadly.
Okay.
It's almost a six hundred thousand of a difference between what's projected for next year. So, you know, we almost have a break. And even more would be deferred.
Dan and Nancy, any comment?
I didn't hear. I'm in trouble hearing what that comment was, what we were on to next.
That the six hundred and twenty-five for the upgrade of the traffic signal should be struck from this year's request.
Yeah, struck, or if, like you were saying, the county offered a ten-year repayment program, you know. It's going to be six hundred and twenty-five this year. It could be like the loader. It's going to be more next year, you know what I mean? So I think if, we got to look at that side of it too. If we can structure a ten-year repayment, do it over time, that might be worth an investigation too.
You have to realize too that your CFO is getting extremely good rate on anticipation notes that are also to be paid within ten years. So let's, maybe, maybe just decide what our priority projects are and let her handle the financing.
Do you think it's the township that's in the path of the county as well, or did the county?
No, I think the township might have to.
But I think that's a county road, right?
Yeah, right, but if the county pays for the entire, like, on sale today.
All right, let's go back up to the top ten. The Schedule C was the next item in line.
So if we have to use the Schedule Cs in the last three years of more projects moving forward, why are we asking for another sixty thousand to do a lot of projects? Anything specific in mind here, Frank?
Well, keep in mind, because of COVID, the county did not show up last year or this year. So that's why the money's accumulating. We have, we do have road projects to use the Schedule C money on. You know, in particular, Atlantic Ave from Center Street all the way down to Dolphin. There's a piece of West Ave off of Coral Street. We have other pieces that Chris and I have talked about that need repairs. So typically, we would put that kind of money in there and use it each year, but as a result of COVID, the county pulled the plug and was only working on their own roads. And I spoke to them, and they pretty much told me it wouldn't be until the spring of next year at the earliest. So it's up to you. I mean, you know, we have a number of roads that we already have on the list.
We don't, not use it again this year either.
So.
I said we might put in there and not use it again this year because we can't
Right.
know when the county is going to come. Oh, yeah, I mean, we don't know if they are or not.
How's the plan?
Take it out.
Yep.
All right, one hundred thousand for storm drain, removal, replace storm drains. If we need. For replace bulkhead, Coral Street and Twelfth.
I think we're going to have our pumping stations, so we need to have our bulkheads up and functioning.
And heavy equipment for the public works, two hundred and twenty-five thousand for a loader.
That's for the beach, right?
Yeah, I mean, we've spent eighty thousand renting for the last couple of years, renting one for the last couple of years.
So it's eighty K a year to rent it?
For the last three years, that was.
Eighty thousand for three years, okay.
And when we rent it, I mean, we can't, like, you can basically only use it every other week because of tide tide when we, you know, during the day. So, I mean, a lot of times it's just sitting there. I mean, if we had it, we could, you know, one, we could use it more because, you know.
Use it when you need.
When we need it, yeah.
And what's the difference between, like, what's the difference between a loader and a bulldozer, like, what?
Well, a loader is more versatile. I mean, a bulldozer is good for pushing the sand up through the dunes and all that, but a loader, I mean, just more versatile. You can do that with that too.
Yeah.
But you can also move sand down a beach, which we, when we dig out the entrances, we save the sand.
Okay.
And then we got to haul it down to where we need it, yeah.
Correct.
We used to have one, right?
We did a bulldozer and a loader. And a dump truck when I first started working here, yeah.
And we have none of these now.
No.
Okay.
Maybe we have put it off a few years. I think maybe it's time to.
Fifty thousand for the refurbishment of a trash truck. Chris, did you want to talk about your fleet?
Well, we have nineteen ninety-nine and a two thousand and three, we're kind of babying. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, sixty-five thousand for the police vehicle. To me, that's the correct amount.
I believe that was the total amount that I gave you for. Yes, the lights and everything. That keeps us on schedule. We have a two thousand and twelve Tahoe that's, it's real high in mileage. It's time for that to be off the patrol.
Do you want to give the council an update on the?
I think it has a hundred and forty thousand on it. It is when you're driving it around.
Can you, so when, when you're looking to buy something new, you're going to take that one out of condition?
That one's good, yeah, that, that.
Does it get sold? Can we make money off of it?
You don't really get much money when you're, when you're auctioning them off, but
Okay.
we do do that, but with this vehicle, we have this one, and when we took out of service last year or the year before,
Okay.
that the mechanic is going to make into vehicles for high tide, high water vehicles. And we're getting rid of the Hummers that we got from the military.
Right, that we didn't have to pay for.
Yeah, we didn't pay for those.
So this two thousand and twelve Tahoe would go into the, being a?
It will, it'll just be used for high water.
Okay. And what's the plan with the Hummers?
The Hummers, as soon as we're able to take them back to drop them off, we will. That was put on hold because of COVID.
And you just feel that the Hummers are just impractical, and this is a switch in plan?
The amount that they're getting used, it's, they tend to get, cost more to keep fixing them. So going back and forth with the mechanic on this, he feels we'd be better off, we'd save money, and they'd be better vehicles for high water if they were the old patrol vehicles, because they already have radios, lights, and everything in them. The Hummers don't.
And what, do we have like a cost, and you may not be able to answer this for me, like a cost of maintenance versus getting a new vehicle for this vehicle or the vehicles in general?
The vehicle that we're going to be pulling out of service, it's, the mechanic just said it's time.
Okay.
It's time for this one to go out. We just can't keep using it for patrol. And the Hummers, they're like, like to buy a starter for a Hummer is like twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
It's like three, three hundred and seventy-five dollars for a regular truck.
Okay. Yeah. And we do all of our mechanic work in-house?
Public Works stuff, yes.
The electronic signboard?
The electronic signboard, I'm actually, we could actually wait till next year for that. But the reason why we're looking to put those back in is because we have three of them, and we're constantly getting requests to use them around town for different things, emergency management, different types of activities. They're all eight-plus years old. You know, we were, the repairs are kind of nickel and diming them. There's a lot of rust on them, so if I did that, if I did one of those on a year when I'm not doing a vehicle, that, that might help this topic out.
And what are they, what would you prefer they be? I mean, if we're getting requests to do other things, I mean, it's kind of, well.
We, we put up information for, we've put up a lot of information for COVID. We've put up a lot of information for storms, for concerts in the park, for pedestrian safety. There's one out in front of Chicken and the Egg, just, just for pedestrian safety. We have requests from the Boy Scouts. We have requests from the yacht clubs.
And when we, when you get requests like special tasks from other, like, entities, do they give, do we charge them a fee?
We don't. That would be something for
Discussion.
you discuss.
I mean, if we're going to use our, right now, they all work, or just?
I believe they're all working now. I think we just got the third one fixed again. I know that, the problem is, I know two of them are eight years old. I think the other one is nine or ten years old.
Right.
And the LED boards are starting to go.
And they sit outside.
They, they sit outside nine months out of the year and.
Yeah, I just don't think the signboard would be a capital thing. I think it would just kind of be cool to put it to something, it's like a project or a vehicle.
I mean, there is equipment, but it doesn't seem like a very expensive.
Capital in nature, sometimes it has a useful life, five years. So it's a piece of equipment that, I know, I know they brought about twenty-three thousand, two, right?
Yeah, nineteen thousand was this one.
So.
Okay.
But, you know, once we get our list together, Shari may decide to put some of the stuff off, to fund it differently. She wants us to come down and boil it down.
So we're saying no to this one?
Okay. The signboard?
Yeah. This year.
Okay, seventy-five thousand for park improvements. Chris, did you want to talk about the plan?
Well, I mean, there, I don't know where to start. There's a lot of improvements we can do, but I mean, there's lights that are, we never did down Taylor Avenue. The, the walkway along the public dock's fault. You know, we had that trouble this year with, with just shoddy workmanship to begin with, yeah. I mean, there's.
Seventy-five thousand would be enough for both of those projects?
No, but I mean, it's a start. I mean, we, we have to replace. Yeah, yeah, I mean, we got to shore it up. I mean, it doesn't look real pretty, but I mean, we can put that off for next year. I mean, but those lights need to be replaced down there too. I mean, I was kind of thinking about replacing with the same kind of lights we've been using.
They're the ones down by the bay area?
Yeah, they're kind of like just, I think they're the same as the ones along Taylor. They're just like a straight pole with a thing on top and.
Okay.
It's where the kids are soon, where the kids are down.
Yeah, oh, yeah. No, no, down, down, public dock.
Dock.
Yeah, and then Taylor along the west side of the field. We did, we did the east side. When we did the grass and the, the west side of it.
And there's no lights in that parking lot that would help to shine.
They are, they are, you mean down, down dock road, you mean?
No, a tailor at the park. Yeah.
No, not by the boat ramp, along the brick paper sidewalk on the west side of the grass.
She was asking.
No, he's asking for on the grass.
Right.
Grassy area.
Oh, oh, along the dock, I mean, the bayfront, we have plain lights there.
Yeah, so you're for where they.
In the park. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We can't ask the people who did for workmanship on the dock to come back and fix it?
Probably not. Yeah.
So what's seventy-five thousand going to buy us, Chris? Would that?
We could probably do one set of, I mean, the lights are, I mean.
This is the green, the grass, that's what we're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the east side. Remember, we did the lights on the, on the east side. They're the same kind of lights, like on the streetscape and all that. Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's why I was asking, are there, is there enough lighting in the parking lot to shine? I mean.
There's one light in that parking lot, street light out in the middle. The lights down on the bayfront don't shine up.
Right.
Up to that, or you're talking about the grass field.
Right.
No, 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 no.
So it's not, it's really for more of that.
Streetscape look.
And the benches right there.
Right.
One for Dan, explanation. They're talking about park improvements, seventy-five thousand for park improvements.
I can't hear everybody. You know, are we talking?
Yeah, it's you two mics.
At dock road, or are we talking at Taylor Avenue at this point?
Well, he was talking about two projects, working on that walkway, dock road.
I don't think that's enough to do, to be honest with you.
It's not enough to do that project. But it would take care of Taylor.
Probably, yeah.
Or the decorative lighting on.
I mean, there probably some left over, I think.
That's the south side, Taylor?
West.
West side.
West, west.
Okay, are we leaving that? Are we reducing or leaving it? I say leave them, okay. The twenty thousand for tie valves, Shari, do we still need that? Chris, do we still need the twenty thousand for tie valves?
Well, I think that would do the rest of the town with what we got now, yeah.
Okay. And is that not something we can pay out of operational, out of our regular budget? This has to be?
Well, I mean, we'd have, we could, we'd have to add it to it, I mean.
Chris, was that, are these items that were included in the bid?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we could use that same bid.
But it's above and beyond the last.
Right, right, yeah. It'd be enough for the rest of the town, I guess.
I think that's probably.
Okay. All right, Frank, can you talk a little bit about the interior retrofit for the Works garage? Six hundred thousand on this?
Yeah, originally, we did the, of course, we did the exterior. The building can be used as it is. It's got heat, air. Well, it's got heated, the electric's in there. But there are, it's a two-story interior fit-out with a carpenter shop, offices, break rooms, restrooms. Pretty much the interior of the Public Works building. So it's two stories high, and with the cost of materials and everything, you know, we're looking at around six hundred grand. I actually had an estimate that was higher than that, but some of the material costs are coming down. So if we do it, by the time we put it out the bid, it would be done over the winter and ready for next spring. Or, you know, after the first year, depending on how soon this ordinance would go into effect.
Was there some discussion about this being built in-house?
At one, at one point, there was, but it's not possible. It's just, there's a steel beam in there, and there's some other items in there that you really can't do in-house.
Whose offices would go in here? Because you guys are housed here.
I mean, it's not really offices, it's just, it's like a small office for like a day-to-day operations, like right now, we, you know, we're kind of the old police station.
Yeah.
And there'd be a break room, a locker room, and then a storage for like the records and stuff like that.
Okay.
And the carpenter shop on the bottom floor, which is, you know, right now, the carpenter shop's on the ground floor on the other, on the other building.
Um, and I'm going to ask this question. Why was this not in the original bid?
Well, we separated because at the time, the, the, the building was quite a bit. So I think last year, we amended the ordinance and added more money just to award the initial bid. I think last year, we amended the ordinance and added more money just to award the initial bid with the mezzanine. So that's what, you know, so it was separated out because the building could be used without it at this point. And it was, I thought it was discussed that it would go into another budget here. So
Okay.
That's why it was separated out because we wanted to get the main structure up. And as I said, the main structure is usable. You can, you know, put trucks in there and it's got a mezzanine now for storage and you know, it can be used as is at this point.
And this not spoken up?
I'm sorry, what?
Can this project be parted into different pieces across yours?
Not really. I mean, once you get into this two-story interior build-out, it's, you, I don't know if you could do one story at a time. You could, I guess, but you know, initially, we have to put all the work in to get the first floor in. Everything in this addition is above base flat elevation also within the interior of the building.
Right.
So it complies with FEMA. Right now, the carpenter shop's on the ground in the other building.
Along with the break.
Right.
Combined locker room and the carpenter shop.
But the entire interior fit-out is two floors, I think. It totals around 2,500 square feet.
I just think for now, I mean, the what works with the heavy equipment that we need and this, it's pretty much the whole entire capital budget. I think it would make sense to buy the three big pieces of equipment that we need and then later down the road, then lots of retrofit the interior of the building since it is okay. It has heat, it has electric. It's good to go and then it can protect the heavy equipment. So I think this should be something that we should be looking in the next three years. Well, right now, every year, we're looking at heavy equipment in the next three years coming up. So I think we need to focus on that. What do you guys think?
Well, I just don't see this getting any cheaper and I know we need it. I just, you know, I asked the same question, same time as Dan. If there's any way we can kind of do at least one phase of this, not obviously the whole 600,000. I don't know if that's possible or not.
I mean, I could, we could modify the plans that are prepared and just do the first floor of it. And and it's designed to carry the second floor at some point. So I don't know, you know, I'd have to break the estimate down, but when you put the initial floor in, that's, that's strong enough to support the second floor. So I think most of the cost is there, plus, you know, you're running electric and you you gotta readjust, you know, the air, the heat and everything just to accommodate the one floor then. I mean, it's certainly possible.
What's the purpose of a two-story versus just a one-story? I mean, you're saying?
So it all, so it all fit in there because it's just gonna be the one end.
Right, it all fitting one end of the building.
Parking vehicles.
Yeah, yeah.
Chris, do you think that's a good idea, split it up?
I don't know. Because it's gonna cost more in the long run.
Longer, we mean.
Yeah, I mean, might as well just weigh in the whole thing, I guess.
What's your priority over equipment in this interior?
Well, we can go ahead and rent a loader. I mean, doesn't matter. I'd rather do the interior first.
Yeah, I mean, you know, unfortunately, I think we're kind of being held to have to do something if this has to be done and you're using another area, but then now we have this space that we were looking to take away, the police department too, and you're currently using that area, but then you'd all be housed in one spot.
Yeah. And we'd be done.
We'd be done. And then the police department, old one goes back to whatever, right?
Start working on it.
What would you do there?
Raise the floor would be the first thing.
Yeah.
For all the D F D.
But I just, like, this is long-term thinking for me. Let's see up on here. Um, but.
Chris, I thought one of the problems you had with renting a loader is you didn't get the one you wanted.
Last time we we worked, it worked out all right, yeah.
Yeah, but in the past, you said you get the ones with wheels, you get.
Yeah, sometimes they give us one where the wheels aren't, doesn't, don't float on the beach is good.
Right. So it's, you know, after what happened.
That's not a part of our regular budget, right?
The beach restoration, yeah. Like I say, in the last three years, we spent eighty, eighty grand on renting the equipment.
Right, over three years versus buying $200,000.
So Chris, with the public works garage, your priority over the equipment and we did have a conversation with Brian. We were debating, we should start renovating the old police station and he agreed that we really need to finish this public works project. It's the last piece of infrastructure from Sandy that's still waiting to be finished. It's the last piece.
And Sherry, how do we do that? Can you speak to that for us, please? If we approve that, like, so would this go back to the original ordinance?
It would do. So, I mean, I, to build a building, in my mind, I wouldn't recommend, I wouldn't recommend, please, you're gonna, right, I mean, I I don't know, the whole thing to me, I go back and forth, maybe we should have done the whole thing in one shot already.
Right.
You want the history of the contracts and the cost on the one line. And just like last year when we amended it because of the price increase, if we're going to add this amount to it, I mean, it's not gonna be probably on your, on the bond ordinance. Most likely, I'm going to just amend the original ordinance.
Okay.
But it's still, it's still a a figure that goes into our debt for 2021.
Okay.
As as in the total, but you know, it's a tough decision, you know. But at the end of the day, if it has to be done, it's the last building that we need to complete from Sandy, you know.
What number are we down to?
With the building included in the mix, we're at $1,675, which 375 of that is a grant, 370-ish is a grant.
And if you remove the loader, Sherry, where are we at then?
Well, if you remove the loader for two, what, what is that, 225, 225, you're just a little over a million at that point.
Are you at 1,435 then?
On a 1,675 or minus the 225, you'd be at 1,455. Then you pull off 370 for the grant, fortune. You know, your amount of authorized to borrow is around, around the million dollar mark.
And that's with the, that's with removing the traffic signals as well?
Yes, I removed the traffic signals and the schedule state.
Lower in the signboard, move, sign orders removed.
And then just loader, I have a yes next to it, but it's even a bit.
And then the last item was that, the gator that was on the list, 15,000.
If we get the replenishment, that might be a different story, but our beaches aren't that big right now. I mean, I know there are people who could use it right now. I understand that, but.
My encouragement was raised for someone to invest in one and create a business, to be honest with you. It's how the trough started.
So we're gonna strike the beach equipment, Sherry, 15,000.
That's our requirement. Then to a large one that we find.
Yeah.
Right, sorry. Are you at 1,435 in the share? So now we're striking the the beach equipment.
Yeah, I got one, one toward 35. So what we, what remains is 375,000 for road reconstruction, 100,000 for improvement, replace storm drains, 150,000 replace bulkets, 50,000 refurbished trash trucks, 65,000 police vehicles, 75,000 park improvements, 20,000 tie valves, 600,000 interior DPW garage.
And is that a pretty good estimate? That's a question for Frank. Because I know, you know, just to bring up a sore subject, but pickleball cost us more than we expected to.
Well, I have to say this. I mean, I, I had an estimate done for this and it was higher than the 600. And it was based on the current, current cost of, you know, plywood right now and some of the other materials. I've heard a lot of some towns have put off projects till next year just to let the material costs come back down because of COVID. So I think the estimate's close. You know, I mean, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, we'll, if we're gonna go ahead, we'll put the bid out. I think the last time we bid the main building with the mezzanine, it came in higher and we amended the ordinance.
Right.
You really can't change the plan. It's, it's a, a two-story fit-out. It's what Chris needs. And, you know, we'll, we'll put the, the plans are ready to go. So once the ordinance is in place, we'll put it out the bid and see where we are. I mean, there's a lot of competition out there for contractors right now to bid on projects, but materials, you know, these, these guys are fighting over labor more than material because material is whatever it is.
Sure.
Do you think, do you think material's gonna level out?
I mean, I wish, it was really funny. I was talking to my son today and he had to spend $86 on a sheet of plywood, three-quarter inch, and I'm like, wow. So, you know, I don't, I don't know. I mean, some materials have come down in cost in the last couple of months, but I don't know what to predict three months from now.
Right. Could go either way, really.
Yeah, it could. But, but I guess, Sherry, if we do this, when is this ordinance, one of these funds available after the first of the year, right?
Yeah. Well, Sherry, we're gonna introduce probably in September, right?
Yes.
October, they're still available. We have first reading, second reading, and then 20 days after publication. So usually around November.
Yeah, so you're almost at the end of the year in terms of putting something out the bid.
Almost, but every month counts.
Right, so I mean, I mean, our plans are ready to go. They were, everything was designed at one time. We just separated it.
I mean, it knows what it now, you know, we have the time, lunch, or contract.
I don't see any point in delaying it based on the cost of material. I mean, worst case scenario.
I mean, I mean, if the ordinance is gonna be in effect November, we can time the bid opening to coincide with the availability of funding.
Worst, you know, best case scenario, we come in under budget.
Right.
Sorry, do we feel comfortable where we're at?
Chris? Yeah. Me? No. Dan?
Yeah, well, we saved over a million off of the wish list, so.
How about the water utility?
Nancy, are you okay with where we're at?
Yeah, I, I, it's hard to, it's hard to hear and, and the hospital keeps having alerts, but a couple things. Is there any way that, that the public works guys can do some of the work on the garage themselves so we don't have to pay prevailing wage?
There's very little we can do. I mean, I'm in there because it's all, we don't have licensed electricians, licensed plumbers.
Okay. I mean, I'm just thinking that might be a way to save some money. I, I, I would vote, I mean, I, I think we should try to at least get one floor done or half the project done. I, I agree with Dan. I don't think we should wait and, and the anticipation that building materials will go down in price, that they could go up. I, I think that's important. We, we get to work on that. I also think it's important to have that front-end loader. In my conversations with Stu Farrell, he said the most important thing to keep the beaches from, you know, totally washing, the dunes from totally washing out is to try to keep a slope on that dune, which Chris knows, we've talked about it. And the front, the, the, the equipment that he would like would, I think, make it a lot easier for us to do that during the winter when the storms come in, as soon as we can get in, onto the beach to try to at least create a slope instead of a wall. I think that, that has the best potential of saving our beaches. But that, those are the only comments. Otherwise, I'm in agreement with everything.
And that would be additional 225,000. That would take it to 1,660,000.
Right, well, I mean, I think, I, I just think it, it, I, I'd leave that up to Chris, but I, I really feel that our beaches are our most sought-after. I mean, we, we just got the award for the best beaches. And I know this past year, it was very difficult trying to keep the sand plowed up and I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking that's, that's our number one tourist attraction. I'd like to get rid of a few tourists, but I think we all don't want to see our beaches go. Is there any chance of getting grant money for something like that?
I don't, I don't think so. Another consideration is we probably won't get the replenishment until, for two years. I mean, if they do a.
Well, they're supposed to come in the fall. They're supposed to come in the fall from my.
Yeah, to reevaluate it, yeah. And then it'll be a year to go at the bid and then another year before the, they award and all that, yeah.
Yeah, that's what Stu Farrell told me. So, yeah, yeah.
Chris is saying that, you know, it'd be about 40,000 to rent it for the year.
Right. But I mean, you, yeah, well, you have to sort of figure out.
The longer you rent, I mean, you're gonna pay for one.
Exactly. I mean, yeah, you paid for it in a few years, so. And, and I think we went through this last year, that the length of life of those things is pretty good. I guess my only concern is where in the heck are you gonna keep this thing in front of a Robin Johnson's property?
No, that's that was just a bulldozer because we don't have a trailer for it, the, the.
Right, I know, I'm just, that's just a joke.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All right, I, 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 you know, so I, I mean, I'm in agreement. I think I, I mean, we need, we need so much. There's so much we need and it's, it's difficult. I mean, we, we are, we are, you know, we're a bigger town now. We have more going on. Everything's needed, so it's hard.
That's Wayne, one, you still keep the loader off the list or you're debating?
I, I'd like to have the front-end loader on the list, but I, I realize, how much of the public works garage? I, I'm, it's very hard to hear. Are you planning on just doing the one floor or the entire 600,000?
No, we're planning on finishing it.
So you would, that would cost 600,000. I, I would, I would rather, I, I mean, I'd, I'd leave it up to Chris, but if, if it were my choice, I'd probably say do half of it, get, get half of it done this year and buy the front-end loader. But if Chris feels it's more important to get that done, then I'd go along with him. I, I'd let him make the decision on that. But I, I do, I am concerned about the the, the loss of sand we're getting. It gets worse each year and I, I expect, I mean, I, I totally believe in global warming and I really believe in the fact that the tides are getting higher and I think we've got to do whatever we can to preserve our beaches. But anyway.
I just, I'll re, I'll just reiterate, Chris's priority was finishing this building. And the dump truck and just rent one.
Yeah, unless you can dig up some more money.
Maybe someone will want to sell us.
What's that?
Maybe someone will want to sell us one of their cheap.
Well, we, they had one away when we got that truck for a dollar from the county that had a loader, but it wasn't a, it wasn't worth it.
All right, thank you. Yes, move on.
Well, move on to the water utility. As you know, Chris is now the superintendent of the water utility as well. He's taken over for John Booth and retired. And Chris intends on being a bit more aggressive on the water utility projects than his predecessor. So we, we are starting off with a four-year plan, but we intend to make a longer-term plan to replace the water mains down live. On the, on the agenda tonight, we already saw an appropriation for 200,000 to include the water main on Pelham Avenue in that project. That amount is included here in your item number one, water mains. So that 450,000 you see there includes the 200,000 that we already had first reading on. We just wanted to give you the big picture. The, the goal is to put 250,000, 275, and 300 going forward to try to get the whole town, the undersized mains replaced. The next item is plant improvements. Chris is looking to do an upgrade in the chlorination from a liquid to a tank. Chris is looking to do an upgrade in the chlorination from a liquid to a tablet. Having Mike Clark from Long Beach helping us out, it's been very beneficial. He's showing us some things that they do to help with the system, so that's something that Chris was looking to do. Chris, did you want to discuss that at all?
Not really. I mean, I'm, we're still not, I actually short on it, to be honest with you.
Okay. The valve exerciser, ninety thousand, did you want to explain that?
Well, um, uh, with the Water Sustainability Act, there was, you have to, there was a clause where you have to exercise the valves every so often, you know, and they should be exercised anyway so they don't get stuck.
How many valves do we have in town?
I'm not exactly sure. I mean, there could be upwards of a thousand, and there's like four, should be four on each intersection, then one for each tire.
We often run into problems with the valves.
Like, like on, on, uh, on Nice Street project, we just had it, we couldn't shut the water off, so we had to put an insertion valve in, which is fifteen thousand dollars just for a valve. Because we couldn't isolate that pipe. So the valve exercise is like a, um, a tank and a motor on a trailer, and it has, um, like, um, when you do the valve, you, um, you have to spin it a certain amount of times, and you have to count the, um, the spins, and then you have to record all that for the state. And then, um, so this, um, counts the spins, and then you have to back it off so much and, you know, and turn it again. And I mean, um, these big valves, it takes two guys with a big, um, big crossbar to, you know, turn it, you know? And it takes time, you know? And then, um, it has a thing like, um, the, the valve, like the, um, the pit is only like this big, and the cover comes off, and a lot of times they're full of dirt or water or some, so this machine has a suction thing where it can suck all that out. Like, right now, we gotta get in there and shovel it out by hand, yeah?
So that's your idea?
So to exercise a valve, it's like a big, I mean, like, um, process, yeah?
Yeah. And this would help?
Yeah.
Come up into compliance?
Yes.
Here, there was a compliance issue about that.
It was supposed to be done by, um, uh, October this year, but I don't think we're gonna make it.
And what happens if we don't make it?
I, I mean, I don't think they're gonna be that strict about it right now, but I mean, it's, if you wait a year, I mean, like, if you, um, don't get it soon after that, it's gonna be a problem.
They just want you to show that you're, you're showing that you're working.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and that...
And this machine also, like, um, like, right now, like, if we do a test pit to see if there's a, um, an old, um, service, an old main, like, do it with a shovel, you have to dig a big pit. With this one, you can just dig a small hole and just suck it out with a jet, you know? So you have less...
You can rent either?
Um, I don't think you can now. I mean, and, um, you can pay somebody to come out and do it, it's like forty-five dollars a valve.
Okay. So that's... Yeah. The final piece of equipment is an excavator with a trailer?
Yes. And that's for, um, like, right now, we use a backhoe, and, um, it's just a big, I mean, a backhoe has its place, but for doing, like, a lot of the services we do, it's just, too big.
With a smaller piece of equipment, um, we won't just take, open as much of the road to stay off the side.
I got some figures I can show you, actually.
Like, we have to go right up in the people's yards to, uh... Like, um, like, is it a trench we dug? We have to go right up in the people's yard to, uh, with the backhoe. The, the other motor machine sits right over, you can split, you, you dig it, and you just spin it around right there, and you...
Yeah.
Again, and the whole, the trench would be wide.
Okay.
This isn't something you can rent.
And how often do you, would you utilize something like that? Like, how often are you doing those types of jobs?
Probably do a couple dozen a year, I mean... I got no idea, I never, never rented one.
Maybe if you wanted to ju, jump back up here, Sherry, and talk about the...
But if you have an emergency, I mean, like, to rent it, I mean, you gotta get two quotes or, you know, I mean, I mean, um, like, a lot of this is emergency work, yeah.
Okay. So that's, the total of the items on the list for the water utility is seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand. Right now, there are no notes issued in the water utility. We do have quite a bit in the capital improvement fund, but this would drain it. We spoke to Sherry, she was advocating that we self-fund this, that maybe we actually looked to take a note this time.
I mean, the water department hasn't had any new equipment in a long time, and, uh, like, if the backhoe goes down, then you have to back up for that.
Would you take a note for the entire amount?
That's, I mean, I would add a list of that.
Yeah.
Just for the equipment, right?
No, I would, I would definitely do a note for the water main, uh, plant improvements, but possibly pull out some of the equipment.
Everything okay on that list?
I'm, yeah. It's a must, we...
That is yours. Yeah, you poor guy.
Public Works, everything costs two-hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so if you have any other last-minute changes, because you want to discuss with Sherry and I, feel free. Give some time to think about everything that we talked about tonight, and then Sherry and I will start working on preparing something for the September meeting.
Okay. Could I ask a quick question about the water utility stuff?
Yeah.
The projection for the following years after next year, um, are they based on us getting that equipment? I mean, once we get that equipment, it, we, we should be saving some money, correct?
You're looking at the water utility?
Yeah, if you look at the, I was just looking at the projection on the budget of the water utility over the next five years or whatever. And, uh, I mean, this year is a big amount, but, um, would, would those, those, those figures, are, are they linked to the fact that we would budget that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or whatever it was, um, in total?
Uh, no, this, this year's budget for water utility is inflated because we are putting the water main on Pelham Avenue on top.
Okay.
Annual, what we're looking to spend annually for water main replacement.
Okay.
And this equipment, I mean, I mean, that, that, that's only like every twenty years or something, you buy stuff like that.
Right.
Right, right. And, and shouldn't they help us save money in the future with the other projects we're doing or money as, as far as manpower and so on?
Yeah.
I mean, I think, yeah, okay.
That's for sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Like, Chris, the valve exerciser, right? You just have to spend money. Right, so we just spent sixteen thousand because something wasn't...
Yeah, 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 because we couldn't close the valve, yeah.
I think we would save at that point would come out of the outbreak budget, money that we spent now or... Thank somebody for...
Anything else for Sherry and Chris?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're down to the public comment portion. Again, we'll go to the room first, and I ask you to limit your comments for three minutes, and then we'll go to Zoom. So, is there anybody in the room who would like to make a, yes, Mrs. Wushuzen?
State your name and address, correct?
I'm Mary Wushuzen, and I live at 134 Center Street. My concerns have to do with the executive order allowing outside dining, which I really understood last year was very important, and we needed to do it. But what I didn't realize is that with outside dining came along loud, very loud, outside music. Last year, we put up with it even though we complained a lot, but this year, it's really unbearable, and specifically, at least where we live, it's the showplace. And I know everybody loves the showplace, and the showplace is great. However, we listen to thirty shows a week, um, which means it's like three hundred shows. Last summer, we're on our road to three hundred shows this summer. It's not just normal music, it's shouting, it's screaming, it's the host actually encouraging people to shout and scream. And lately, over the last couple of days, it's been encouraging the people to stomp on the ground. And this is at nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night, and I know the, the noise ordinance doesn't really kick in until after ten during the week, after eleven on the weekends, but this is abnormally loud music that goes, starts at six, and it goes until ten or eleven. We've already, at that point, endured practicing in the showplace from sometimes eight, nine o'clock in the morning, all the way through, we get a little break at five o'clock. At five-thirty, my husband and I start getting high blood pressure because we're thinking, okay, what's gonna happen tonight? And it's always something terrible. If anybody doesn't know how the showplace is, um, how it functions, the, uh, there's, it's an amphitheater. There's brick walls on three sides, and it throws the music and the screaming out onto our house, into our backyard, and into our bedroom. We have our windows closed, we have our air conditioning on, our fans on, and we can't take it. We are in a state of emotional distress, and I know that that sounds really dramatic, but it's absolutely true. If we, we just, we can't, we've talked to the management. I was told recently that I was hateful and that I should move if I don't like it. They've, they said they make some concessions, but they don't. They made the concession to eliminate the cowbell, and I didn't even know there was a cowbell involved in the shows. So they eliminated that. Maybe one show, they turn the microphone down, the next show, it's louder than ever. So we really, really don't know what to do anymore. And I guess my main concern is that this is gonna be the new normal, and that they're never gonna go back inside, because they can fit two, three times more people in that space in the courtyard than they can in the showplace interior. So, um, that's all I have to say, and I'm just hoping that somebody can help us, maybe appeal to the management, um, because they don't want to talk to me anymore. They don't want to listen to me. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. As you know, I have spoken to the management on several occasions.
I know you have.
And, uh, basically, and, and I know you are aware of this too, but our police department has been responsive. They have issued some citations, but it is their discretion to determine whether or not they feel noise is appropriate. I know there's a difference between there. Like I said, they go, the other night, I believe the officer asked them to turn it down. I honestly don't know what else we could be doing at this point in time. I, you know, like I said, it is, we have our ordinance that we have to follow also, and that's why we're relying on the police. And I think they've been fair as far as what they're doing. I know you disagree, and...
I have no concerns about the police.
No, 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 I meant, I meant what determines...
What is your recommendation? Like, do you have a recommendation?
I, I would like you to turn it down.
Okay.
That's what I would like, and not turn it up in the show.
Okay.
And really, and it's not the music as much as it is the host who has this loud microphone and screams and yells all the way through. So it's not as much the music as it is the encouraging by the host of the people to scream and yell and stomp, which I don't think that's called, doesn't make sense to me. And you know, I know a lot of people don't realize where, you know, where we live in relationship to the showplace.
Right.
I don't think they realize how loud it is until they turn that corner and say, oh, wow.
Thank you. If anybody else in the audience would like to call the mom.
Hi, everyone. My name's Chris Weedling. I live at 329 Essex Avenue. I guess first I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that the tax revenues from legalizing cannabis could take a big dent out of the equipment wishlist that I just heard you guys discussing. It would cover... Oh, sure. I think it would cover our, our very conservative estimate, would cover about ten percent of that budget in year one, probably closer to twenty to thirty percent by year three. And that's every year annually in recurring tax revenues. Point number two, though, I wanted to ask Mayor Lambert a question directly. So I heard last week that you made a motion to try and cancel all future cannabis presentations in Borough Hall?
No, what I said was, I felt for now, we had already discussed this enough and we had heard enough. And I also had the concern, and I'll be very honest with you, because you know, we met privately, and we discussed it, and I said it was education important. And I honestly think that's how going forward, it should be done. I think that any private business should arrange to have a forum on their own. I would recommend that, you know, you get a large venue, as large as you feel is necessary. I have no problem with the nonprofits coming in here, like, you know, we have Save LBI, the Black State, and all that. But for a business to come in and do presentations, when some people, and I got feedback, they did not want to hear it, and they felt that it was a imposition, that a borough council meeting was being used for a private business to send out their business partner.
Well, we haven't actually made our presentation yet, so what are you talking about? The, the, the LBIcannabis.com, that was...
I would encourage this as a public comment, so, I mean, dialogue's, someone's good with the topic.
Okay, well, no, but yes.
All right, so my question... All right, so my public comment is, I think when politicians make moves in the, in back rooms and try to do undemocratic things like prevent presentations and votes, it's because they've lost the, the discussion in the, in the public. Like, if you're trying to prevent a vote on cannabis legalization in this town in the future, it's probably because you don't feel confident about the results of how that vote's gonna go. So my question is, are we, my wife and I, you're, you're right, we came to you a couple months ago, and we've been working with other people in the council to try and educate as much as we can about what our presentation's gonna be. But my question direct to you is, are we gonna be given that chance to present to the town next month after the state laws are out and after it's appropriate for us to bring this proposition to the town?
Everybody's in that same concern. That question, I mean, the, the Borough Council adopted an ordinance that banned all forms of cannabis. There was no motion made that was referenced. There were no backredeals. I, I mean, members of the council met with Mr. Weedling in private, so... I had every chance to speak to the council, and then the council made a motion to pass the order to ban it, which is what most of the municipalities in New Jersey have done, at least in my experience.
And the council amongst ourselves did say that at this point in time, you didn't feel it was, and that was a majority, that was a...
Okay, but, but they, they also said when the state laws come out, which they're supposed to come out August twenty-second, I'm hearing potentially they could be delayed. But after that, we are on the, on the schedule to present on August twenty-sixth, and if the laws, the rules don't come out until after that, we'll, we'll present at the next available meeting after that, and that's our plan.
If the council, majority council...
I would recommend we see what the rules are, and then make a determination at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room, let's speak?
Chris Anderson for 25 Third Street. I'd just like to take a moment to say thanks to this new council for eliminating that redevelopment plan that caused so much hassle in the town. It seems like it's quite a while back now, but it, first opportunity to really say so. So thank you for passing the ordinances to get rid of that redevelopment plan, and hopefully that'll continue to, you'll continue to do the job to protect the town the way you did on this one. Appreciate that. I also have a, and, and a... Pardon me. Just a suggestion that I gave about three years ago, that when we hire the, or rent the street cleaner, that somehow we get the word out to people to get their cars in the garage or on the, off the street, because we waste a lot of time, and we, and a lot of area doesn't get cleaned up because they have to go around the cars. Thanks much for your job, so, your all doing.
Anybody else in the room, let's speak? All right, anybody on Zoom?
Any person attending the Zoom, which should be heard, can raise an electronic hand under the participants, participants tab. And also unmute yourself and make yourself known. If you're on a regular phone, you can star six and also announce yourself.
All right, saying none, we're closing the public comment portion. And we will go to final remarks by council. And I believe it's time to start at the back end, so Mrs. Rufford, we'll do the honors.
Mic shortened now. So, thank you so much for, um, everyone in attendance. This is a long meeting, sit and listen to Capitol ordinance, um, things like that going on in the Capitol budget, so I appreciate your time to stick through it with us and listen. Um, I just want to continue to encourage, as you, many of you may know, Chief Markowski and with the help of... and with the help of myself, I guess, um, you know, continuing the Neighborhood Watch program, that will be every Friday from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. And if you are not able to meet that time, I understand that that can be challenging for some people, please just email us. You can go onto the Borough webpage, NeighborhoodWatch@beachhavenpikeandnj.gov. So we've had, we've had some attendees, we'd love more if, if possible, or your, your concerns and your comments that you're seeing around town, if you would like to be addressed, um, it just provides a great dialogue between, um, the police department and our neighbors. And then, just lastly, I just wanted to say that I'm excited and looking forward to attending the 52nd Annual White Marlin Invitational that we talked about in the spring. That will be starting on Wednesday, 11, down at Dock Street. I'm sure it'll be very busy down there, and keep us on our...
Just lost them.
Yeah, we just lost Pete, Nancy.
Yeah, Dan, I lost everybody but you.
I think everybody else is here, I just think they're gone. Hold on, let me, uh, reach out to Sherry.
Okay. I can hear you the best.
I'm the only one left.
Hey, it's Frank, I can hear both you real well also.
Okay, yeah.
I think it's funny but them.
Just lost everybody else.
Does that mean we have to do public comment?
I don't know, I guess you're not gonna comment.
That's all right, I don't have anything to say. Summer's flying by.
Yeah. Everybody that is still here, I think, I've seen a lot of names still here, I think possibly the meeting could be over, I don't know.
I, yeah, I see a lot of names too. They're, they're doing last comments, but, uh, obviously, we can't hear them.
No.
Oh, well. Should we adjourn?
I don't know.
I just texted a few people.
Yeah, I've texted Sherry directly. I don't think she's... There we go.
People are leaving like mad now, I'm, I'm getting these notices, so-and-so left, so-and-so.
Yeah.
Steve just left. Pat McMenamin just left, we're down to 17 people there.
Just a... I still see a beach haven flag here.
Well, there's still 18 participants.
They're muted.
Can you hear us now?
There you go.
I see the flag, I see the flag.
Oh, you're muted again.
I'm not muted, you're, and I, yeah.
The courtroom's muted.
Oh, that's what it is? Okay.
There you go.
I'll figure this out.
Okay, Dr. Davis, final comments?
It's my turn?
Dr. Davis, Nancy?
What?
Final comments?
What did she say?
Final comment.
It's very hard to hear. All I can say is summer's fast going by, the weather's been great, enjoy the beach, and the band. That's it.
Thank you, Stone.
Capital budget discussion is always a heavy one, but I just want to let you know, even if you did it on various projects or different vehicles, that I do appreciate everything that you do, and it was just like such a horrible decision to try to be fiscally responsible and then listen to you and what you need, so, yeah, thank you for everything. That's spinning. As far as, um, this institution, I also contacted you via email, and I do sympathize with you. I mean, just people that live here year-round, with our families, like, our heads have just been spinning for the past two years with the overabundance of crowds and the tents and the people walking in the streets, and the bus was going the wrong way. I mean, it is just, this summer especially, has been trying on a lot of people that, you know, are regularly raising their families here, and I do sympathize with you, and I just want to let you know that, you know, moving forward to the summer of 2022, I am hoping that we're moving everything back into the building. So I, I can't imagine another summer is this crowded, with having the amount of people just pre-running, there's something has to kind of be reined back in. So I don't anticipate next summer being as much outdoor as it has been. And we will come together like we did before this summer, and look at all of our emergency orders, and pretty much go through it and see what we need, what we don't need, and, you know, what is the best moving forward. So please know that that will definitely happen, and that discussion we did this year, I think it was January, February, right after our reorganization meeting. So, you know, this is an ongoing conversation, so I do sympathize and I'm with you, and we will be working with you, the whole community, moving forward for the next season. Thank you. Other than that, thank you for everyone for coming, we always welcome everybody's expertise, especially Mrs. Simon, who gave us, you know, her interpretation of the definition, which is always grateful, we're always grateful for our experts to come in and give us help on that, because we are just a council, and we use all of the experts necessary. Other than that, thank you everyone for coming, and...
Thank you, Mr. Allen?
I don't have too much to say, other than, you know, thank you for Chief Markowski and Superintendent Chris Carson for giving us, you know, some insightful feedback on the budget. As Jamie said, it's always, you know, a tough decision, you know, trying to decide, you know, you'd love to say yes to everything, but that's just not fiscally responsible. So it's, you know, not easy, and that's probably one of the harder parts of being a council member, in my personal opinion. And as far as everything else, I would say, you know, I'm excited as well about the Marlin Tuna Club tournament, that's going to happen down at the end of Dock Road this year. I'm very interested to see how that plays out. Hopefully, the weather lets boats get out, it's looking a little bit dicey now, but, you know, I'm excited to see some fish, big fish coming in over the dock down there. And other than that, you know, we are probably at the peak of summer right now, and, you know, it's crowded, and people are bumping into each other, and I hope everybody stays safe and healthy.
And thank you. And that just leaves me, and again, I wanted to congratulate Public Works, Beach Patrol, badge checkers, for a great job, and I also want to thank our police department, our office personnel, and, and nothing happens in a vacuum. So all these people working behind the scenes to make sure we do get an award like this, we're very proud of everyone, we want to thank all people. I also like to mention that there is a blood drive tomorrow that we're sponsoring, and it will be from 1:00 to 6:00 at the Fire Hall, and right now, they still have about eight appointments, I think, open, and walk-ins are welcome, so if you're so inclined, please stop by, and we'd love to have your blood. Other than that, thank you all very much, it was a process tonight, we appreciate everybody's input, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.